Go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. Good evening. In response to COVID-19, all participants are required to wear a face mask. Those who cannot attend in person this evening are joining us via Zoom webinar. Welcome, everyone. Okay. Our first order of business is our Pledge of Allegiance. If I could go ahead and get those that would like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nope, computer went dark, sorry. Okay, next is our land acknowledgement. I believe Director Perkins is going to go ahead and read that for us tonight.
Yes, thank you. Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan peoples and the Cowlets tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thank you. All right, let me go ahead and ask for a roll call for attendees. Director Julie Bocanegra.
Here.
Director Victoria Bradford.
Here.
Director Rob Perkins.
Here.
Superintendent John Boyd. He is joining us via Zoom. There he is. Administrative Assistant Lori Stroll. Okay. Going to entertain a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I move to adopt tonight's agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on with tonight's agenda. Next item is Resolution Number 6604. This is the three-year school program renewal levy. Do we need to have a discussion on this, Lori, or just it's board action, correct? So we just need to entertain a motion? Right, entertain a motion to move Resolution Number 6604, the three-year school program renewal levy for April 2022.
I move to approve Resolution Number 6604, Evergreen Three-Year School Program Renewal Levy.
Second.
Is there any questions from the audience? Any board discussion or questions, discussion?
The only, I guess the only thing I would say in, and I know we'll have more information, just that a lot of effort and work has gone into revising this to be something I think that's a little, that will be more acceptable to the community and will still serve the needs of our children.
I would agree.
Yeah, I agree, and I just want to thank Jennifer, who's here, who's worked on this and looking at it from a different angle, that hopefully that, you know, our citizens and our students, it'll still benefit our students and the programs that we have, but help kind of our community too.
I appreciate the work John Boyd did to coordinate a rapid, but reasonable and informed response to the election result and collaborate and seek our advice about how to proceed.
We have a short timeframe to get the message out and make sure people understand what's on the table here for this, and so it's going to be all hands on deck.
This levy is very important to the district and for programs for our students. So hopefully this round will have a lot more support from our community. All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've adopted Resolution Number 6604. Lori, it looks like our next, actually, hold on, I'll ask you a question. The next item on the agenda is the interview candidates for Board of Directors District Number Four position. We are going to go ahead and start our interviews. However, I believe we have our first one scheduled for 5:30, so we're a few minutes early. Okay, so should we just keep going, or is, is he here? Brian, are you, okay, perfect. So at this time, we're going to go ahead and move into our interviews. I'll go ahead and, any, need anything?
We haven't even discussed it. How many do we have?
Hold on one second. There's eight? Sorry, that was really loud. Take number four. As we get this organized a little bit. Yeah, go ahead. Hi, Brian. Thank you for joining us this evening. Sorry for the chaos. We don't do this very often, so fortunately.
Well, thank you all for having me tonight. I'm excited to get to know each of you a little bit better and to share a little bit about myself.
Wonderful. Okay, we have, okay, so we have a series of questions, and we'll kind of rotate, and I'll go ahead and ask the first one, okay?
Please tell us why you decided to apply for this position, what strengths you bring to our board, and what you hope to accomplish utilizing your unique skill set.
Thank you. So I come to you guys tonight first as a-
Need to speak into the mic.
You can, yeah, sorry, it's like-
No, thank you, I'll bring it a little closer. It sounds really good right above me.
I know.
But that probably doesn't carry, is that better?
That's great.
Okay, perfect. So first, I come as an educator of 18 years. I found my way into education in a variety of positions, first serving small groups of students, learning reading through AmeriCorps Vista. That led me to seek a career as a teacher. I became a special educator, which I did for seven years, working, you know, happily and wonderfully with Evergreen students at Heritage for five of those years. That led me on to school reform work and seeking an administrative credential, and I've been able to serve the students of CAMUS for the last 11 years, as a Dean of Students first and an Associate Principal afterward. I also come as the parent of two students in the Evergreen School District, one a current Roadrunner of Riverview and a future Roadrunner. So what brings me out is the opportunity to continue my career arc of service, both to the community that I grew up in, in CAMUS, and serving those students and families, but also to serve the community I live in and the community I love here in Evergreen. Excuse me, formal speech is a little bit more difficult with the mask. What strengths do I bring to the board? You know, as I shared in my initial application materials, you know, something I feel that could benefit the board is the years of learning, service, and achievement that I've had in education, and that those skills might benefit the board or enhance the board in the collective work that is done to serve our community and our students. My hope ultimately is that, if chosen by our board, that those skills would help the collective work that we have together in continuing the great work of enhancing outcomes for our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next question. Evergreen Public Schools values diversity and equity. As a Board Director, how would you advocate that all students are included in learning opportunities and all community members have a voice in our schools?
So, you know, at the heart of the work we do should be the desire, and I believe it's the desire of this board, to eliminate the, eliminate the gaps, but really that we can eliminate the ability to track a student's potential based upon their demographic features or their social, and I apologize, you know, it's funny, I spent last week working with our RSVP kids in interviewing skills and practice, and I'm normally on the other side of it, and I told them, be prepared, practice. So I apologize, I'm just going to gather myself really quickly there. Equity needs to be the heart of all our work. We have wonderful, diverse communities around us, and historically in education, we have underserved many of those communities, and so the heart of our work should always be looking through the lens of equity and inclusion for our families and our students who historically have been furthest from that educational justice. My advocacy in CAMUS schools has been committed and strong towards improving those outcomes and diminishing those gaps with the hopes of eliminating them, and my work as a potential board member, if selected, would be to continue that engagement with all our community, to continue that work.
All right, thank you. Name the two strengths and two areas of needed improvement for the Evergreen School District.
Two strengths come really easily. We have amazing, wonderful schools, amazing talented staff and administrators and directors in those schools, and we have an amazing supportive community. Those are two foundations that we're so fortunate to be able to build upon. Two areas of needed improvement, you know, at the core, one, you know, one area of needed improvement is, as we continue to navigate through COVID and the experiences of the last couple of years, a real focus or a continued focus on re-engaging our students in school for success and diminishing the learning lag or learning gaps or learning loss that we've experienced over these last couple of years. The other short-term needed improvement is, as the directors all noted in advance of me coming up here, is the levy, and that how do we take the information and communication learned from our community and our families as to what they didn't experience or what they didn't feel like was meeting their needs in the initial levy communications, and approve upon that so that we can continue those great experiences for all our kids?
All right, just took me a minute to finish writing that. Who are the particular community connections you have or constituencies you would represent as a school board member?
So the first one would be, you know, the community of District Four. It's a, it's a large, you know, chunk of our community, all the districts are large chunks, but in particular, making sure to hear and communicate the needs of that community. But in truth, I think the constituency is the entire Evergreen School District and everyone within that border. I've been fortunate to have really great collegial relationships professionally with Evergreen staff members, other administrators, teachers, directors. I've had mentors out of the Evergreen School District, and my hope and my desire would be that I am able to faithfully advocate for their needs and interests as part of a collective decision-making body for the benefit of our students.
Okay. What kind of time commitment can you make to the work of the board, such as additional meetings to engage the community in two-way discussions about issues, time away from work to attend conferences, training, and workshops? We don't do just two meetings a month, in other words.
Yes, it's true. No one puts themselves out to be a board member for the fame and glory and pay of it. You know, I think that I could say that I come into this process understanding the amount of work and time and dedication that you all put in, as witnessed through my own school board and my engagements and interactions and relationships with them, and the amount of time that's put in. I'm fortunate, as an educational administrator, that there is sometimes more, sometimes less, but sometimes more flexibility in my schedule to be able to navigate the varying responsibilities of a board member. I also know that, you know, as a citizen Board of Directors, we need to ensure that the process is supportive of whatever individuals take this position and that there is some level of flexibility, otherwise the system doesn't work. Does that fully address that question?
Any additional? All right. Question number six. If appointed, do you plan to run for the position in the November 2023 board election?
Great question. My most honest answer to the board is if selected, if the board felt I could best enhance the team, is I don't know. I have never considered being a school board member in the past. My hope, and what I would get out of this, is that at every, every role and every experience I've had in education, it's made me a better teacher for students, communicator for families and their needs, and my hope would be that in experiencing this process, I would further gain skills and would feel confident to run in '23.
All right. Brian, is there anything else about you that we should know in order to better consider your candidacy?
Again, as I shared in my initial application information, I come to the board tonight not with, not with an agenda, or not because I am unhappy with how things have been going in the Evergreen School District. I'm very, very proud, as a parent, to have my children in this district and to continue their growth. I have been so fortunate across my, across my life as a product of the public education system and what it has afforded me and the gifts that is given to me, and I'm in a position now where I'm able to try and give back to my professional community, the community of CAMUS, many of those gifts that it gave to me, and with this opportunity is a chance to continue that expansion and to give back to the community I live and love and the community that surrounds my own children here in the Evergreen School District.
And so, do you have any questions you'd like to ask us?
You know, it's always good in an interview to have questions prepared for the board. I will say that I've spent a good deal of time reviewing the last few months of board Lori has been in great communication, shared information with me. I actually don't have any questions for the board. I'm excited at the opportunity that you guys have, and I know there's a couple of us candidates, and I'm confident that the board will be served well by either of those candidates that you have to choose from tonight, and I look forward to hearing more from you, and if I'm that person, then awesome, and, you know, if I'm not, then I look forward to working with whomever that is and continuing the hard work that we have for our kids. So thank you all.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you for coming.
Do you need anything else from me, or do I slip off quietly back to?
We're good. All right. We're good. Thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you all so much. Thank you all so much.
Are we scoring the last question? Do you have any questions for us?
Yes, we do John. Sorry, you scared all of us.
Oh, sorry guys.
It was like we were hearing from on high.
Sorry to scare you Jenny.
Well, and then Lori had us muted, so we couldn't respond to you right away.
Are we gonna be on?
No problem at all, I just wanted to make sure I was following protocol.
We're, um...
Break?
So, we're actually running kinda early right now, so we're gonna go ahead and step away, take a break. Our next interview is at, it starts at 6:10, so we will be back when that starts. Thank you.
And so, people wanna hear.
Two, three, one, okay.
All right, we are back and we are going to go ahead and continue on our interview process. Next, we have Tyrone Foster with us. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. We're gonna ask you a series of eight questions, starting with Victoria and just kinda going back and we'll just kinda round robin it.
Okay.
And then, we'll get started.
Great, well, glad you're here. Thank you for applying. Please tell us why you decided to apply for this position, what strengths you bring to our board and what you hope to accomplish utilizing your unique skillset.
So, the honest answer would be is that I found out that there was an opening and I think I've always felt that we should always share in the responsibilities of our community and so I thought that because I've always had a passion for children and education, not only because education has changed my life, but also my wife and I are foster parents and so we've always had a commitment to children. And I think as far as, you know, my unique skillsets, I mean it'd be my unique experiences as well as I currently serve on a school board in Portland for a charter school there. And I have always been involved in schools wherever I've lived, in New York, in Virginia. When I first started my career in Corvallis, Oregon, I also volunteered in the schools there. So, I've done a lot of work actually in schools, trying to serve our children. As far as what I hope to accomplish, I guess bring my unique perspective and my willingness to roll up my sleeves and serve.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Evergreen Public Schools values diversity and equity. As a board director, how would you advocate that our, all students are included in learning opportunities and all community members have a voice in our schools?
Well, I guess, I mean, the way to advocate for all students is being open to listening to parents and teachers of all the students that we have and making sure that everybody's needs are addressed. And, you know, and being willing to, you know, stay engaged in the conversation even if they're uncomfortable, to see how we can come up with solutions that are beneficial for all parties.
Okay, thank you. Can you name two strengths and then two areas of needed improvement for the Evergreen School District?
Okay. So, I guess as far as, you know, the first strength, I think there's always been a commitment to academics, even before I had children and even before I lived here. I started my career with HB down in Corvallis and when I used to come up to Vancouver to visit, I, parents, I mean coworkers who were parents in the school district used to talk about the schools here and what their kids were learning and I used to always be impressed with like, wow, I didn't learn that until later on in my academic career. So, that, so at least from what I've, and then also what I've seen as far as, you know, a foster child that I've had in the school and then also my first child also being in the school, I think that that commitment to academics has continued even from what I saw back in the 90s. So, that commitment has been consistent. The other strength, I guess, that I've seen since I've lived here is that I think that the school district has advocated for all parties, the students, the teachers, and have been willing to ask for the resources that they need. As I've seen improvements and renovations happen at the various schools around here and making sure that, you know, the relevancy of what was being taught to students. So, I think that, you know, I've always, I think that's another strength, I mean is getting what's necessary, I mean, for all of the parties. Two areas of need improvement, I mean, to be honest, I mean, I don't have a lot of insights as far as like, you know, like what's not working well. I, I think in general, I think that any school district or any school, I mean, needs to be open to meeting students where they are and making sure that we're creating nurturing and safe environments so that all students can learn.
All right, thank you.
Hi.
Hey.
Who are the particular community connections you have or constituencies that you would represent as a school board member?
So, could you give me some clarity on what are community connections and constituencies?
Constituency is a group with a common interest or a voter. Community connections would be, kinda like your connection with Kairos PDX is a community connection across the river.
Okay.
Or other organizations or affiliations.
Okay. Yeah, so then, so then yeah, I'd say that, you know, my connections would be Kairos PDX as well as I've interacted with PPS, the Portland Public School District as well in my capacity in that role. You know, as far as voters, though I don't really see them as voters, I mean, there would be people in my neighborhood and other parents at my kids' schools. You know, quite honestly, I mean, I, my plan would not be to represent any special interest group, I mean, I would just try to be an advocate and represent, you know, our entire community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, it's me again. So, people think we only meet twice a month, but that's a lie. And so, what kind of time commitment can you make to the work of the board such as additional meetings to engage the community in two-way conversations and about issues and things of that nature? Time away from work to attend conferences, training and workshops and just various activities that we are involved in during the, throughout the month?
I mean, I would make whatever commitment is necessary. I would hope that there'd usually be some advance notice if there was additional or emergency meetings, but I have enough flexibility, since I own my own business, to be able to have some flexibility with my schedule to make myself available for what's needed.
If appointed, do you plan to run for this position in the November 2023 board election?
So, my answer would be yes, depending on what I learned from actually being in the role. My intention would be yes and I think I'll even be more committed after spending some time on the board and better understanding the workings of the organization.
Thank you. Is there anything else that we should know in order to better consider your candidacy?
Well, I mean, I'd fill out the application, I think, you know, gave an overview of who I am and why I'm interested. As far as anything that wasn't included in there, I would say that... I guess the thing that I would say that wasn't on there is, is that I am definitely a person that is not looking to be the smartest person in the room, I mean, that's never my intent. I am definitely a person that is always open to the possibility that I'm wrong and I think because of that, that allows me to hear other people and to stand in a space that I might not regularly reside in and be able to hear for the contributions that they're trying to make to the conversation.
So, do you have any questions you'd like to ask us?
Sure. So, what are the main things that you're looking for as far as the next member of the board?
I think, let me get my list out.
Each one of you can answer.
No, I think, you know, just someone who's gonna be dedicated to the work. We work as a team, we're not, we don't do anything as individuals and so somebody who will fit in with our team and be open to good discussion, maybe even have a little fun sometimes, but to be, you know, committed, that's, and not to have some agenda, one kind of one agenda kind of a thing, that's...
We're here in service to students. Without them, we wouldn't be here, so that's, you know, a lot of what we look for is just that, you know, for someone that is, to serve students.
Yeah, I would say maybe to add to that what Jenny said, cause I mean, that's really what it's about, but just somebody who shares our passion for equity work and the belief that all students can succeed.
Long been a value published of ours. Excuse me, allergies. What Jenny said was about students, that focus on students has to be unrelenting and, you know, as I think about what I'm thinking about in this appointment, it is to have that voice and perspective that we don't have, who can, as Vic said, work as a team, as an equal. So, I'm really excited actually to have our fifth member come on and, I don't really know, yeah, it's a tough question, it's a good question. Someone who cares about kids and wants a good outcome from kindergarten, pre-kindergarten really, all the way past their graduation is what we're, what we wanna focus on. We're looking for somebody with that focus.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do I get to ask more than one question?
Sure.
All right, so, the next one that comes to mind actually, cause Julie, you had talked about equity. Can you give me some more insights about what you actually mean by equity? And before you answer, for me personally, I think there's a difference between equality and equity. I think really equality is saying that it's kinda cookie cutter, we're gonna give the same to everybody and I really feel like equity is more about recognizing that there are different needs and being willing to meet a child where they are and giving them that extra that they need. So, but that's my definition. So, I'd like to hear what your definition of that is.
I think we would all agree with your definition.
Come on. In your own words?
When it comes to, when it comes to the equity equality conversation, we would agree with everything you've said as part of, as far as what we have done as part of our equity work, we've, oh gosh, just, all of our staff, our educators have all participated in courageous conversations training. We have, what are they, focus, not focus groups, they're affinity groups with all of the, again, different with students, staff, our community members. This is Vic's, she likes to, she's got them all checked down, so I always look for her, so, take it away.
That's cause I'm the old one on the group, in the group, I've been around for a long time. So, I agree with Jenny on, and you, on that definition, but it goes beyond as far as a board member goes, it's asking the right questions of the community, of the staff, of the leadership, as to what we are doing for every child and that we don't have, we, we're not gonna be able to look at a child and based on the color of their skin or their socioeconomic status, be able to predetermine that they're either gonna make it or they're not gonna make it. Because we, we believe in our, every child can do it. And so, we have to bring to them whatever it is that it's gonna take to get them to graduate. Cause I'll tell ya, I always look at it from the first day of school when they're in kindergarten and then the last day when we, they walk across that stage and we hand them their diplomas. They're very powerful times that are very similar in many ways because you've got so much potential and to be able to see them when they first start and they're so excited to learn and they're all at, I wanna see that same kid all those years later walk across and get that diploma and be excited about what the future holds for them because opportunity, the options are there, they're not gonna be limited. So, for me personally, that's kinda been my mission is just, I can tell, I see it in their eyes when they walk across that stage and I know that we either did it or we didn't do it. And so, it's just, it's just as simple as that for me and then we just kinda build on that. We've made a very significant commitment to our equity work. We have quite an amazing staff of people that is very dedicated to that and I'm really proud of that, that we've put resources there, not just kind of a token situation, but a true commitment to it and it's, it's becoming very systemic in our system. But we still have work to do. Sorry, didn't mean to take so long.
Oh, no, no, that was beautifully said.
Get me on a tangent on that one.
That's so beautifully said.
Equity is very strong in our buildings, the work that we do, the commitment we've made, really, and like you said, you know, reaching the students where they are and taking it from there.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, you know, making sure that our students and our communities heard and valued and that we're doing what we can to remove barriers to their education and, like, just like Victoria said, making sure that they have a chance to succeed. And I loved her analogy about the, that excitement, because it's true, right? That's what we wanna see for our kids.
That's true. A lot of our board work over the last 18 months, right, has been about articulating what equity means to this board and this district and we came up with language for a couple of policies that include considerate compassionate, talking about the environment in the room where students experience their education. Empathy, civility, compassion and dignity ought to be extended to kindergartners, to the eighth grader who just did something that got him into the principal's office and so forth. And that they're able to celebrate and share all their perspectives stemming from their identities, including their racial, cultural, ethnic and family identities. I'm actually reading from the policy when I do that. I don't usually, I'm not much of an orator without a piece of paper, but, you know, that's the idea, is that the atmosphere in the room should permit this discomfort in a context of compassion and inclusion. And to me, the work is about each moment more than, say, a particular thing or a lesson taught or anything, it's ought to be the hearts and minds of the people around those children.
Do I get to get one more question in?
Sure.
Okay. So, when I think about education, I actually think that it's multifaceted and a lot of attention is given to the academics. I guess I wanted to hear from each of you, you know, what other facets do you think are important or that the board focuses on around education beyond just the academics?
I would like to just quickly touch on the, I feel like we're being interviewed.
That's why we asked the question, right?
I don't know what he's getting himself...
Right.
Exactly.
One of the, one of the big equity initiative pushes that we did a couple of years ago is that we have actually gone to where we provide, the district provides, school supplies for all of our elementary school students. And that was part of our equity work and as well for our secondaries, for our middle school and high schools, we have provided activity buses. So, if students stay after school, we've also eliminated all activity fees, so they can participate in art and all of those, do sports without having to pay for participation. And then after they're done, we have buses that will actually take them home from the school after practice for those families that aren't able to pick their children up. So, we still provide transportation for them. Cause it's, it is extremely important that we offer these opportunities for our students because the more engaged they are in their community within their school, the more likely they are to continue their education and have a strong educational experience.
I would just add to that too, that obviously sports, athletics, clubs, music, drama, all of the things that keeps kids engaged are really important, is that's why our levy is so important, so we can continue to offer those programs to our students. And for me, it's about adding as many different educational opportunities that we can, it's not just about, you know, writing and reading and math, it's about so many more things that give kids something to be excited about learning. Obviously, we need to, our kids need to be able to read and they need to be able to write and those things, but they, you know, it's a new world and so technology's important and career type education is important for them too.
We have classes that actually teach students how, math by building houses. So, we've gotten creative ways of teaching students different skills.
There's only growing there. Um, for me, it's, they call it a whole child, I think, is that there's, and I guess even based on my experience as a student in this system so many years ago and then today, is the observation that if a student has the one happy thought, which for me was banned, right, or choir, then they'll go to school and they'll go through the other pieces of subject matter because they'll have a community with them, right? And to me, it's that sense of community and that sense of belonging that makes academics almost natural for a kid, right? A child growing will learn, what they learn is up to the environment around them. So, I'm thinking social emotional supports, wraparound supports of other kinds. You might need a school nurse to administer medication, everything from that to being on a basketball team or a robotics team. And so, that broad availability of as many happy thoughts as possible is gonna help them fly.
And I think I agree with everything they just said, because, you know, we're a large district and there's a lot of kids here, a lot of families and all of them have their own various interests and needs. And so, I see us as a board, you know, wanting to make sure that people have ways of connecting with us and that we have ways of connecting with them. with them. So that we hear people, we hear our students and what they need, and we hear from parents. And we have a lot of different languages spoken in our system. We have a lot of different types of family issues. I mean, our schools reflect our society. And I'll tell you, I've been on the board for 20 some odd years, and this last couple of years have been the roughest in many ways because the pandemic just brought all the things that our families are challenged with just even more in focus and more apparent. And now, here we are, we're back in school, but how we address those issues and the, kind of the fallout is something that weighs heavy on our minds and hearts. So those are things that we're working on right now. And so it's just, it's a lot. There's a lot going on, but that's part of what makes this job worth it, too, is, you know, we've, we all get to meet and interact with some really awesome people in this community. And to be a part of that is pretty gratifying.
Any other questions?
Actually, I've plenty, but I'll, I'll leave it there.
You have seven more minutes.
Yeah.
Oh, so there's no more questions for me, sorry.
Six more minutes.
Four minutes, you can keep asking.
If you want to ask, you do not have to. We can end. We're just, we had, you have six more minutes on the time that we had reserved for your interview. So if you have another question, feel free.
Yeah, okay. So before I get to my next question, one of the things, because I mean, you guys want to get to know me, too, right? I, I do think that academics are important, but one of the things that also is very important to me is the social aspect of our schools. There is so much that our kids learn about society and what is so, you know, social norms and how they're going to interact with others that they learn, I mean, in our schools. And, you know, is there, you know, I think you had said like emotional intelligence, like, like there's things like conflict resolution, emotional intelligence. I mean, you know, how, as a board, right? I mean, once again, you know, academics is important, but, you know, as the board, I mean, how do we also address that other really important part? I mean, and there's a number of things, right? I mean, you talked about drama and, you know, so the other outlets that people have, you know, like their creative outlets, but also how do we help, how does the board help create the environment that allows for the education on the social aspect of it? Does that make sense?
So I think, you know, that whole social, emotional learning piece is probably one of the more challenging ones to kind of get your hands around because it's not as simple as read this book, take this test, blah, 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 because every single child has different needs. Our staff are trained in trauma-informed care. I don't know, are you familiar with ACEs?
Adverse childhood experience.
Yeah, so it, it kind of, it's a way of kind of gauging the numbers of kind of traumas that a child or a person has had in their life to help kind of inform what you need to do to help that person.
And who goes to that training?
All of our staff, all of our teachers.
Okay.
And, you know, administrators. So we kind of do feel committed to that kind of work. We also do a lot with mindfulness and trying to teach our students how to manage their feelings and not telling them what to feel, but, you know, when you get mad, what's the appropriate way to deal with it? And what are some techniques that we can show you and teach you as, you know, teach our children so that they learn positive ways of dealing. But we also want our students to be good citizens and to be able to advocate for change in a positive way. Because we know there's lots of ways to do it, not in a positive way. But, but we want them to have a voice and we want them to know how to use their voice as part of, of a democracy and as part of being a good citizen. So there's, you know, we also are a restorative practice model in our district. So it's not all about punishment. It's about making things right and learning from those things. So that's, that's some of it right there.
I know that a lot of our secondary schools also offer clubs that are, I wouldn't say out of the norm, they're just not something that, I mean, when I read them, I'm like, oh, I would have never thought about that. But some pretty creative clubs for kids to join that would not normally join after-school activities, but they're trying to come up with more creative ways to get the kids involved and, and doing things together. So I, I think it's been, what I've seen in that and getting the kids, because there's a huge push to get our kids involved in more social and in programs or after-school activities or just to be involved. Anything else?
Said it all?
Okay. How much more time I got?
Two minutes.
All right. So based on what I had put in the application, was there anything in there that you wanted any clarity on, that you were curious about? I mean, that you'd like, you know, some more?
I'm also a business owner. I'm curious about your philosophy about education and how it impacts your business and, and what that means to you as a business owner.
So, so from, so, so first off, for my business, we do offer to all of our employees, we reimburse them for education. So if they want to pursue various things as far as education, we do reimburse them for that. You know, I also talk to my employees about the importance of education. And we also make available, if there's anything that has to do with their kids, you know, picking them up from school or anything like that. I mean, we do provide flexibility for them. Because, because for me, education is paramount. I mean, I think I've even, on more than one occasion, you know, I've talked to my employees about how important education has been for me and transformative. So I think that, one of the things that I think that education can really benefit individuals in general, and once again, I think it gets back more to the, you know, the social aspect, right? It's not just about learning, you know, how to do something as far as like technical things, but also, you know, in those environments, like learning different perspectives on, you know, how to see things. And, and then with that, being able to, within a work environment, being able to understand that there's more than, you know, one way to get things done. There's more than one perspective. And that, and I think I've used this example, I mean, in my workplace, as far as, if you're talking to somebody and they've taken a position that doesn't make sense, it may, and to you, that means there's some missing information. Over and over again, throughout my life and my career, once everybody has put their cards on the table, I mean, that's where the real understanding comes from. Because as soon as I realized that you didn't know a particular thing, it's like, oh, okay, now I understand why you took that position. You didn't know this. And then the same thing for me. I didn't know that. And so that's why I felt this way. So, so yeah, so I mean, I definitely have communicated, I mean, you know, how important I think education is, I mean, within my workplace. And even, I mean, we recently lost an employee because he's going to college, which I completely supported.
All right.
Run the clock down?
He did. We're out of time.
All right. Mission accomplished.
Thank you very much for joining us this evening and for your application. And we'll be in touch.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Talking to myself. All right, we are going to take a quick break and then start our next interview at 6:50. We'll be back. Am I, okay. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started with our next interview candidate, Jacqueline Wetherspin. Welcome.
Hello.
Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having me tonight.
So we have a list of eight questions. We're going to go ahead and start with Victoria and we'll just kind of keep them going around. And then we'll, you can ask us questions at the end.
I know this is redundant, but for the record, please tell us why you decided to apply for this position. What strengths do you bring to our board? And what do you hope to accomplish utilizing your unique set of skills?
I have been on the district's Equity Advisory Committee for the past almost two years now. And I'm the committee's liaison to SAFE, which is Students Advocating for Equity. And I've been sort of doing this work for the past couple of years. And I've been volunteering, I'm a parent in the district. I have three children, a seventh grader, a ninth grader, and an eleventh grader. And so for the past 12 years, this has been my community. I've been volunteering with students from the moment my daughter started kindergarten. And I have a passion for working with kids because I really care about what happens to them and what their outcomes are and what, how we help them get there. When I was, my kids started at Harmony Elementary. We moved into the, this district a little later. But when I was there, I noticed that there weren't anyone else who looked like my children in the building. They would go all day and they wouldn't see anyone who looked like themselves. And so for me, it was more a matter of making sure they felt like they were included in the community by seeing themselves there. So I made a point of being there and volunteering. And I felt that way because I really believe that representation matters in terms of you get something out of it and they get something out of, they learn from you, you learn from them. I think that for this position, I'm a very good communicator. My background is in journalism. I used to be an editor and a reporter. And I am used to talking to various communities and groups, people who believe what I believe or don't believe what I believe, learning from people, gaining information. I'm a team player. I believe in working with communities and groups to find consensus and to find answers to questions and achieving results. And I don't believe in letting discomfort get in the way of learning and growing and getting to the outcome that is necessary, especially for students and for kids. Because we're going through a lot of change right now. And I believe that it's not going to be easy getting to the other side of this. And so we have to sort of push through and bring the kids along and meet them where they are to get them where they need to go. What I hope to accomplish using my unique skillset, in the past two years with the Advisory Committee, we've been working on a lot of DEI work. And I think that I've seen the district put a lot of effort into moving forward with an eye toward that, looking at, looking at these things holistically through that lens. The other thing I think is really important is improving communication. I feel like, especially like with this levy, it didn't go through because I don't think we reached out the right way to people to get them to understand what was at stake. There were lots of videos about what it did, but nothing really about what would happen if you didn't pass this. And that was really important to me. That's what I was looking for as a parent, like what's going to happen if people don't do this? And it was very heartbreaking when it didn't pass. And so it was hopefully, if I'm in this position, being able to sort of steer the conversation more toward looking at how to make those changes effectively, looking through DEI lens.
Thank you. Evergreen Public Schools values diversity and equity. As a Board of Director, how would you advocate that all students are included in learning opportunities and all community members have a voice in our schools?
As I just said, I'm a part of the Equity Advisory Committee. So I've been working with affinity groups and students, specifically students. I'm a, my stakeholder group is a parent, but I've been actually working with students in terms of those kind of issues. And for instance, SAFE, which is Students Advocating for Equity, it's a new group. And their goal is to help students use their, their agency to affect change in a positive way for, in sort of getting the environment that they need to learn. In terms of, uh, community members, basically, when I, I worked for the PETA for many, many years. And I was volunteer coordinator for five straight years in a row. And it was my favorite thing to do. And so I'm used to meeting families where they are and helping them figure out how they can contribute. Because what I learned is, everybody wants to help. They want to be a part of this. This is their community, too. And, but it just looks different for different families. And so making sure that we can reach out to families and get them what they need in the way that's best for them.
Thank you. All right, name two strengths and then two areas of improvement for the Evergreen School District.
So in my experience over the past 12 years, one of the best things about the school district is the staff. We have amazing teachers. And especially through the pandemic, I've seen people go the extra mile and do, move heaven and earth for these students. Just lesson plans, going to their homes to make sure they have what they need, knocking on doors to make sure that the student's going to log on that morning. The staff commitment in this school district is very, very strong. The community, actually, like I said before, I was volunteer coordinator. And I was able to firsthand experience how passionate the families and communities are for their children, for the schools, for the district. They want to be a part of this. They want to, you know, volunteer, they want to serve, they want, they want to do these things. And so we have a really good natural resource in these people, just making sure that we can get to them and target them and get them what they need. In terms of improvement, communication, the district has lots of great resources, great programs, but a lot of parents have never heard of them. You know, they don't know that there is a youth opportunity pass where they can get, you know, a free bus pass or a membership to the community center for their student. And that could help students who need help with transportation or want access to different services. There are all these things that the district offers, but parents haven't been made aware or students don't know. And just sort of beefing that up would be, I think, a place to work on. Outcomes for under minority students, I'm aware of some of the data that shows that students of color, brown and black and brown students, their academic experiences aren't the same as the other students. Their disciplinary involvement is higher than the other students, regardless of how low the percentage of them are part of the district. And those are things that I think that definitely need improvement.
Who are the particular community connections you have or constituencies that you would represent as a school board member?
As I said before, I work, I've worked with students the entire time I've been in the district. And specifically SAFE, which is, like I said, is a fledgling group. But the goal for that group is to have them be a part of the decision-making process in the district. Because of course, like we've been saying all night, they're the reasons we're here. They're the, you know, the clients of the policies that we're creating. And of course, the district for the community, different families, but mostly for me, truly the students. Because at the end of the day, our goal is to get them across the finish line so that they're healthy, happy citizens, that they have bright futures. Because there's, there is a potential there for them to do anything. And we're just sort of setting it up right now for them.
So you've been observing us and you know, because of the work that you do already with the district, that this is, can be a time-consuming occupation. So what kind of a time commitment can you make to the work of the board, to be involved in the additional meetings and community two-way dialogue? And then also things like we do our own professional, we get professional development as well. So there's conferences, workshops, trainings.
I, my schedule is very flexible. I'm a stay-at-home parent. And so pretty much... And so pretty much if I'm not running a kid to this basketball game or that soccer game or to an orchestra concert, which is, all those things happen tonight, then, you know, I've got free time and I'm willing to use it.
Great, thank you. If appointed, do you plan to run for the position in the November 2023 board election?
My first answer, my first impulse is to say yes because there's probably still going to be work to be done. I don't see, the work is ongoing. And so if I start it, then I'm going to want to see it through.
Sorry, just taking a couple notes. Is there anything else about you that we should know in order to better understand your candidacy?
I have, like I said before, pretty much all the volunteer work I've ever done has been very student-based. Reading in kindergarten with students to working with SAFE. Some of the students I actually read with in kindergarten, I'm now working with on this high school committee. So it's been very exciting to sort of see that growth and that change. I've been in PTA for, I did PTA for years and from volunteer coordinator to co-president. The committees, I, I love working with kids. I love volunteering for my community. Evergreen has given me and my family a very strong community of friends and people who are like family and who have changed our lives. And this will be a great way for me to give back.
Just waiting for the, do you have any questions that you'd like to ask the board? Would you like to ask us?
A lot of the questions have actually been answered by previous people, so I won't make you answer them again. But I was wondering, what is the one thing this past year you're most proud of that you've accomplished so far this school year? Or make it easier, since the pandemic began, what is the one thing that you're proud of that the board has done for students?
I think we all could pick. I mean, we've done quite a few, so I think we could all grab one. I think one, for me, one of the, one of the things that kind of sticks out for me is our response to it. When the schools were shut down and we came back from spring break and we were still shut down. And the response that our district, our administrators, and they're leaping into action and getting the buses fuel, you know, fired up and delivering meals and then homework packets to our students at their school bus stops, doing take-home meals at the schools for people to drive up and grab them. But just the, the way that they were able to kind of come together as a team and find creative ways of still providing some of these things for our students. Because there, we have a number of students that without the meals they get from the school, they wouldn't eat. So that's one of the biggest things for us is we want to make sure that we're still continuing to provide that. So I know that that's, that was one of the, early on. But I think COVID's just kind of turned a dark gray cloud over all the good things for a while. Always going to keep those though.
I would say, for me, I would say the Equity Team, bringing in Clarissa and company and really being committed to it, all, you know, and, and trying to make it very systemic within our system and about who we are. So I'm, I'm proud of that. I, um,
That was one.
Okay. Hello?
So for me, I would say, in the beginning of the pandemic, it was really important for me and I think the rest of this board to get kids in class. And especially, you know, some of the kids that needed extra help, finding ways to bring them in in small groups. Work with our education groups and our union leaders to make sure that we can make that happen so we could provide the best possible service to those kids. And then throughout, keep finding ways to bring more kids in and expand on that. And then most recently, especially this last few months where the virus continued to, to go, a lot of districts around us and throughout the state were having to go remote, do this. And we just kept steadfast and we kept kids in the classroom. We found a way, transportation, classroom, everywhere. So just, I think that importance of just making sure that the kids have the best possible chance to an education.
How do I follow that? Since the pandemic began, we had already been working on an Equity Resolution before the pandemic began. But I think the events of those months helped us tune the language. The ability to very clearly present and explain what the Equity work is, which we did in August and September, is just like face the controversy and address it with the call. Clarissa Hightower was the face of, she was the master teacher in the room for that presentation with Julie Tomalty and really calmed some hearts and minds. So the kind of work that we can do in this space like that is, is really valuable to me. But the idea, like Vic said, that we mean it when we're talking about Equity and that we need all voices from each race and ethnicity and whatever other characteristics. We put a big list in two of our policies that we wrote. And that, if it resonates with others, will have been really good work.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
I think the other thing too, and this is, this is, really speaks to the board, is we've been through some really challenging times. And we've seen in our community some pretty challenging dialogue in board meetings in other districts. And we've had some of our own, but it's been civil. I, I would say we've not had, you know, out-of-control board meetings. We've been able to have conversations that I think were meaningful and respectful to all opinions. And to be, I, I hope we're seen as a place that the community can come, share their opinions and, and whether they agree with us or not, but that they're going to be listened to and it will be done in a respectful, civil way. And I think in this day and age, that's kind of unique sometimes.
Do you have any other questions? All right. Any questions from us? No?
It was really nice to meet you.
You as well. Thank you so much for coming in. And we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are going to go ahead and take a break. And our next interview starts at 7:30. All right, we are going to go ahead and come back and start our next interview with Sarah. And this will be the first time I've had to say your name, so is it Achy?
It is, it is.
Awesome. We have eight questions that we will ask you. We will each take turns, starting with Victoria. And then you'll have an opportunity to ask questions at the end.
Fabulous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight. It's good to see you again.
Yes, good to see you guys as well.
So to start off with, tell us why you decided to apply for the position? What strengths do you bring to the board? And what do you hope to accomplish by being on the board?
Sure. So I decided to apply for the position because I feel like it's a great opportunity for me to continue to grow. I've spent a lot of time in front of this board. And each time I've been in front of this board, I've had great opportunities to learn, which is exceptional. What strengths do I bring to the board? I would hope that by this point, this board has learned about me, that I, as much, as much as I stand on my moral ground, I'm also incredibly willing and ready to always learn and to grow. I cannot sit and, and talk and not listen, right? Like that doesn't make me any kind of community leader and it's certainly not going to make a difference. So my hope would be to sit on this board with you guys, learn, grow, bring my ideas to the table. And as a collaborative, continue the work that you guys are already doing to make this district better.
Cue. Evergreen Public Schools values diversity and equity. As a Board Director, how would you advocate that all students are included in learning opportunities and all community members have a voice in our schools?
So I think that that would really tie into the project that's already being done and being piloted. I think a big part of what I would do is support that program. I've had a wonderful opportunity to look at the, the curriculum. I have sat for amazing presentations. So the biggest thing that I could do would be to support and be actively involved in making sure that that project is moving forward and participating in it the best that I can.
Sorry, just taking a couple notes. All right, Sarah, tell us two strengths and then two areas of needed improvement for the Evergreen School District.
So let's see. First of all, this is one of the largest districts in the state of Washington. Something is happening right here. One of the biggest strengths of this entire district is the commitment to the students here. From delivering meals during, throughout COVID to our amazing bus fleet that is getting our transportation issues taken care of. There are so many people in our community, especially right now, that are struggling with basic things. And food and transportation are, are big ones. The fact that these parents know that they can rely on Evergreen School District to help meet them where they are is a really big deal. Another strength that I see is communication with parents. Parents in Evergreen School District feel very welcome here. We feel comfortable coming into the board. We feel comfortable going to our schools and speaking with our concerns. And then also being able to be involved. Weaknesses? I think one of the things that I would like to see Evergreen School District kind of push more is parent involvement. Communication is great. It's great that we feel comfortable coming to the leadership in our, in our district and in our schools. However, parent involvement is a really big thing. I feel like if we had more opportunities for parents to get involved in our schools, in our, even here in the, the board meetings, then we could, the connections that we could form and the community, Evergreen School District is huge on community. The community that we could really foster and develop would be incredible. Another area of improvement would be our career training. What are we doing beyond two-year and four-year colleges? Do we have things like the employer-endorsed living wage programs? Are we, are we looking at those things? A four-year college, a two-year college, sometimes even trade schools are not an option for our students, depending on, on circumstances. So that is an area that I feel like Evergreen School District could work on.
Good, thank you.
Got to turn that on. Who are the particular community connections you have or constituencies you would represent as a school board member?
This is a tough one. I'm really actively involved in our community in a number of different areas. I think that limiting myself to representing one solid group of people would be disingenuous of me. My goal would be to listen to and be a voice for anyone who wants me to listen and speak. Yeah, again, I'm in so many different areas of this community that I just wouldn't feel right to say that I only represent a certain group of people.
Can you, I just need a continuant. Can you expand on that just a little though, about the different, you know, ways you've been involved with different community groups?
Sure. So I'm an active part of Flash Love, which is serving the community in a bunch of different ways. I'm out serving every Saturday with my son, literally meeting people and loving on them and trying to meet their needs. I am involved in church groups. I'm, I am everywhere, I feel like. Yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks.
So you've been coming to board meetings. There's more than just our board meetings that we're involved in. So what kind of time commitment can you make to the work of the board, such as additional meetings to engage the community in two-way discussions about various issues? Time away from work to attend conferences, trainings, workshops, and any other sundry things that we do?
So should I be appointed to this board? I would be available for any work that needs to be done. I have an amazing job that knows I'm here tonight and is ready and willing to, to support me. So none of that is going to be an issue. It would be in bad taste for me to have even applied for the position if I wasn't willing to put in the time and the effort. Thank you.
Of course.
If appointed, do you plan to run for the position in the November 2023 board election?
Yes, ma'am.
That was an easy note.
Yep.
That was the, I know, that was the quickest. All right. Is there anything else that, about you that we should know in order to better consider your candidacy?
I am a mom and an employee and a, a community member. I don't have special qualifications. I don't have any kind of higher education, you know, exceptional. What I do have is a passion and a commitment to work hard, to learn, to grow, and to make this district better the best that I can. And I think that's about it.
Last question is, do you have any questions for the board?
You know, I thought I would and I don't. I am so incredibly honored to be sitting in front of you guys tonight. I am honored to have even had an opportunity to, to interview. So I appreciate each of you for taking time with me tonight and for giving me an opportunity to kind of speak my heart differently than I, than I have been.
Well, we appreciate you coming in, Sarah.
Yes, thank you for coming in.
We appreciate you coming to our board meetings.
As you've seen, we don't get a lot of people adjoining us.
I would love to foster some kind of project where people would feel comfortable coming. You guys have made me feel heard. You guys have helped me to learn and grow. I've had great opportunities to speak with Rob and, and Julie in particular, where I have literally gone home with homework to do. And I have become wiser and, and more educated and better because of it. I feel like if parents weren't intimidated, and I have been intimidated, I think I've told you guys this. If parents felt comfortable, if parents took a chance. So if there's a way to foster that, that would be so amazing. They just don't know unless they come.
We agree. All right, well, with that, that's all the questions we had. And if you have no more, then we'll go ahead and call the interview. And I will be in touch.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, am I on? No, not yet, okay. With that, we're going to go ahead and break again until our next and final interview at 8:10. Good, thanks. All right. We're going to go ahead and reconvene. You're going to go ahead and reconvene and start our next interview. We have Anna Johnston joining us this evening. Thank you so much, Anna, for joining us. We will have eight questions for you. We will do it in a bit of a round robin sort, starting with Victoria and working our way down and then back around. And you'll have an opportunity to answer or ask questions at the end. We'll go ahead and get started.
Great, welcome. We're glad you're here. Thank you for applying. Please tell us why you decided to apply for this position and what strengths you bring to, would bring to the board and what you hope to accomplish with your, utilizing your unique skill set.
Okay, well, I've had a lifelong interest in, in education. And my particular area is mathematics. I have my PhD from the University of London, and I got my bachelor's degree from Washington State many, many, many years ago. But I did grow up in Hawaii. And in Hawaii, the school systems are a little bit skewed. And I am very proud to have graduated from high school with a D in trigonometry and then went on to get a PhD in math. Hawaii did not have that kind of growth factor in mathematics, shall we say. I did spend one year of my high school year, my ninth grade year, in Minnesota. That's where I found out I actually could do mathematics. Because before then, in Hawaii, I was always told, you're dumb, you can't do mathematics. And then when I went to Minnesota, they said, wow, you tested really well and you should be in a much higher class, but we can only do so much. And after that, when I went back to Hawaii, they started to put me in a lower math class again. At that point, I knew I had to fight the system. So I was used to that sort of thing. And I had a, that sort of started the passion for wanting to get into doing something about education. So that's, that's why I sort of wanted to do this. We moved to this area eight years ago, eight or nine years ago. I got a job in, at Raytheon down in Los Angeles. And I've lived all over. I've lived in Hawaii, Washington State, Maryland, England, Ireland, New Mexico, and Minnesota. I think that's all of it. I may have missed one or two, something around those lines. And when I went to LA, I said, no, I can't, I can't live in LA. But I like Vancouver and I have friends there. So we moved up here, even though my job was down there. So I've been working here remotely for eight plus years. So that's sort of one of the reasons why I want to do this. I've been interested in education, like I said, my entire life. When I was in Maryland, working for the government, let's just say. I do cryptography and I work for the government, that's all I want to say about that. But when I was there, I started to start thinking that I wanted to do something a little more. I had two young kids at the time, so I went back and started teacher education at Johns Hopkins. When I did that, I found out that teacher education, I couldn't follow the rules. I had, knew too much about mathematics and how they taught and all the things that were askew in the system, that it bothered me a little bit. So I said, no, I, I can't teach. I still interested in it, but I couldn't do that. So when we came out here, I, I thought, now that both my kids are, one is off in the UK getting his PhD and the other is at home working on a film career, shall we say. So they're all, they're all, they're all off doing their thing and now is my time to sort of try to get some more outreach in.
Thank you.
Evergreen Public Schools values diversity and equity. As a board director, how would you advocate that all students are included in learning opportunities and all community members have a voice in our schools?
I think the main thing is leading by example. Showing that you have that openness and to treat everyone equally. Growing up, again, in Hawaii, there's diversity there is, there is no majority of anything, be it race, gender, religion, it's all across the board, all mixed up. It was actually a shock to me when I moved to the mainland and found out that it's not the same way everywhere and to have these little sort of clumps. So I think that's one of the main things is just to essentially lead with that in mind.
Can you tell us two strengths and then two areas of needed improvement for the Evergreen School District?
Not so much, I'm afraid, because like I said, my kids were, they were just out of high school when we moved here. But I will say that when I was raising my kids, they went through a lot of different schools and a lot of different school systems. And I actually, when my son, who is now getting his PhD, he, I told him to, I'm almost embarrassed, dropped out of, I told him to drop out of high school. He had gone to Pullman Public High Schools, because I was a professor at WSU for a couple of years. And then we moved to Maryland and he got bored in the school system. And he was getting depressed because of the boredom. And his teachers there said, if he's bored, he must have emotional issues. And so I said, you need to drop out. And you're 16, I don't think going to another school is going to help. So I told him to drop out and to go to the community college, take whatever he wanted and go from there. And that actually, I mean, his case was fairly unique. And in the school system like this, where those kinds of kids can automatically go to WSU Vancouver, they can do all of those things, he didn't have those opportunities in Maryland at all. So I would say that, the one thing I note about here is that there are no private secular schools, very few private secular schools in this area. And to me, that says that the Evergreen Public School System is probably very, very strong. I can't say much about the needs of the, the Evergreen Public School Systems at this point, because I haven't been invested in it, I haven't worked in it. So honestly, that part I'm going to be, I don't have much comment on.
Okay.
Finish this thought, get it written down. You said secular private schools. Okay, sorry.
Oh, that's all right.
Trying to make sure I have the thought complete. Who are the particular community connections you have or constituencies you would represent as a school board member?
I guess mostly just the, kids mostly in the area. Those would, those, I would say that the kids are the constituencies that I'd want to be representing, because they're the ones who aren't represented by anyone else. And the school board should be an advocate for them. So that would be the main, main comment there. I don't have a whole lot of connections. I did enter, I did a lot of volunteering in the past with Mesa and such before the pandemic hit and before things got kind of crazy. I even dragged my, my son to go and help with some of that mentoring after, when he was in college. He went to college down at Reed, so he was, even though he lived on campus, he'd be home enough to go and do that. And fortunately, I think I've also fostered a love of education in him and love of teaching, so. And part of that was the, that sort of volunteering.
So being a board member does have, has lots of different activities aside from board meetings. What kind of a time commitment can you make to the work of the board, such as additional meetings, to engage with the community in two-way conversations about different issues, time away to attend conferences, professional development, workshops, things of that nature?
I work for a company called Juniper Networks. It's a company that makes routers and internet switches and such down in Silicon Valley. But they, they have a program where they automatically give you one week off per year just for voluntary work. We also have what they call infinite PTO. So whatever we need, we take. So that shouldn't be any issues.
If appointed, do you plan to run for the position in the November 2023 school board election?
I am not generally a political beast, but I do have a very strong desire to see things done right in education and to help with that. So I, I might, depending on, well, A, if I get the position, and B, what happens in the next couple of years and how, what that experience is.
Is there anything else about you that we should know in order to better consider your candidacy?
Anything else about me? Not that I can think of. I, I am a sort of different candidate than most, I've noticed. I'm, I'm pretty much on the high-tech sector and don't have as many connections with the community. One of the reasons for applying for this job is actually to connect a little more since the pandemic and since everything has gone on, that has sort of disconnected everyone. So, and since I telecommute, I am more disconnected than most, so.
So now we have a chance. Do you have questions that you'd like to ask the board?
I have two main questions. One is, what is a typical week or month in the life of a board member like?
Typical is the key word.
I don't think there's been a typical week for two years.
Yeah. Well, I'd, I'd say four years, probably.
There's, generally, I would say that there's weeks that you don't have a lot of anything going on for a school board. It depends on the type of year. Graduation time is really busy, where we spend basically Thursday, Friday, and Saturday all day together. We do seven graduations in three, in three days. We also go away for conference for three days in November every year. Board meetings every other week. Those can last. We start at 5:30. We have gone until midnight at times, depends on what's going on. Again, so it's all really kind of dependent on what we're doing and what we need to. But it's, usually, we work together. So if it just needs representation and not all of us are able to attend, at least one of us are able to. And then if all of us want to, we can. So it's pretty lenient that way, too, in some aspects.
Okay.
And we, you know, different, we have different committees that we participate on. Like I'm on the Equity Team and our Strategic Planning Committee. So those will, you know, depending on the committee, we might have a meeting once a month, we might, depending on what's happening, or it could be every couple of weeks. So it really depends on the kinds of committees and things that we join. And then there's things that we get involved in in the community. So sometimes different organizations will want a board member to come to speak about what's going on in schools, or will represent the board with the legislature and visit with our elected officials about, you know, what's happening up in Olympia as it pertains to legislation for schools and that kind of thing. So it, there's a lot of different opportunities, I'm going to say, to do things, so it just depends.
But what are, sorry, this, this, that stemmed, brought another question. What type of committees are there? You mentioned inclusion and diversity, and what other sort of committees are there?
So we also have like our Evergreen School District Foundation. We have our Evergreen Citizens for Education, which is kind of our levy and bond team. We also have our Strategic Plan Committee that was put together. We have affinity groups with parents, students, community members. What are the things, can you, can you think of anything?
Well, Rob does work with legislative.
Right. Each of us, each, every three years or so are offered this or that county committee. Right now, I'm sitting on the county, Community Action Advisory Board. Basically, you rate grants, grant applications for homelessness, poverty supports and things in the county. Basically, for me, though, I just planned on every Tuesday evening of the entire year being for this. And then when it doesn't happen, it's.
It's a bonus night.
It's a bonus night, yeah, it's gravy. So, and, so my predecessor actually put it this way, you get out of it what you put into it, right? And she put a lot into it. So she was actually a good model for how much servant leadership you can provide to others by devoting your time to this.
I think we all have our circles of influence because of our work or, you know, just things we're involved in, in general, in the community. And, you know, what, things that I was involved in before I was on the board changes a little bit because I'm on the board now and so you're the voice in that group for what's happening in schools. And so there's a certain responsibility about those kinds of relationships. Does that answer your question?
Um, yeah, somewhat. So mostly Tuesday nights and then committee members and committees and other things occasionally, yeah.
A lot of it's taken place over Zoom in the last little while.
Hopefully, that will end soon. Fingers crossed on that. Community outreach for new programs, that's the thing I had. I think for like after-school programs and other things, do you get the community involved much? Or is there, is it just all organized and, and started in schools? Or how does, how does, how do those work?
It's a big system.
Yeah, it's a big system. I just, so is it, is it individuals, by individual schools, or?
Well, I think a lot of the supports and opportunities for students couldn't exist at all without the community. Thinking of our faith partner initiatives, which the meetings have paused, but the efforts haven't. Each of our schools is associated with a church who agree to set aside their doctrines and just go help kids and families. They've done things like put a laundry machine in an elementary school because the families in that particular community needed it. And the church did that and brought it in and donated it entire. Or they'd clean up the garden, or a lot of times.
Lunch Buddies?
The, the Lunch Buddies, yeah. They'd come in and befriend children. And that's one example.
Yeah, we have a very strong faith-based partnership with our local church organizations in the district. And they've definitely kind of just adopted individual elementary schools or high school and just kind of taken them under their wings and helped them. A lot of our after-school activities are ran by staff because they have to be. We have to have a staff member on the premises at all times as well if they're dealing with our students. So usually, those are staffed by, or manned by our staff. We offer a lot of opportunities for our students to be involved, because one of the biggest things for us is that the more, excuse me, the more our students are involved in their school community, the higher likelihood of them, you know, graduating on time and continuing on their education to be, for them to be involved. So we do a lot of extracurricular stuff. We're very supportive of our arts programs, our music and arts, our sports. We offer after-school no fees to participate for our students. Our elementary schools, we buy the school supplies for them. So I think we're on our fifth year, I think.
It's longer now.
Is it? Five or six years where we've been providing school supplies, so parents don't have to buy them. We also offer transportation for our secondary schools. After the programs, for the bus will take them home, so they don't have to walk or wait for a parent to pick them up, because not every kid has that opportunity. So a lot of, it prevents kids from participating. So we just want to get them involved and we want them to be, to feel like they're part of their community.
Yeah, okay.
That answers that one for the most part. I had a, a vision long ago of having, there's a lot of wasted, a lot of energy in the tech industry in general, which wants to give back to education at the K through 12 level. And there just doesn't seem to be a lot of doors open to them to do that. And I don't know exactly how to.
We do a, a work program with SEH. It's not called a work program, what's it called? Internship.
Internship, yeah.
So we've been doing that for a little while. We're actually building that even bigger to where we're getting the tech in the area involved with our students, because we have a huge push with our STEAM programs and getting some of that through in our robotics and things like that. So we've had a great partnership with them.
Yeah, and I know that HP and Intel are so, you know, close to this area, so.
HP's in the area has been a principal sponsor of two of the robotics clubs in the high school. They use their nylon printers to make the parts for the robots for them, if the students design it and so forth. I guess, nope. I guess, nope, I, the idea fled. Sorry, I lost my train of thought talking about robotics.
You can tell what he's interested in.
That is that there is time, if you make it, and to be with students. My son was on the robotics team in high school and they welcomed me as a parent mentor in first robotics. So the opportunities exist.
Okay. We've also partnered, or, you know, we've, we've been the recipient of some pretty sizable grants through the Gates Foundation and things of that nature. I mean, very big grants in helping us with changes in our instructional practices and things of that nature.
I remember what I was going to say. Clark, uh, Clark. Evergreen is the host district for the region's Cascadia Tech Academy, the skills center here. It's got 21, 23 programs, different things ranging from aviation to law enforcement, medical assisting.
Dental.
Dental, technology. They fix Cisco routers in their second year, that kind of thing.
That's kind of nice.
Yeah. And so that's, it's also a tremendous advantage to the kids and students. My son's in that now and he's come to life.
We also have a very strong partnership in the medical community. We have a health and biosciences high school that does everything from, you know, look at things from the, the medical, physical side of things to the pharmaceutical, to bioengineering, you know, all of those kinds of things. So we're pretty, we've got a lot of opportunity for our kids to have some good academic experiences and also have some after-school activities that can be really engaging for the different interests of the, of different students.
Yeah, they, I know they help a lot. I, my cousin teaches third grade in, in Southern California, in Brea, which is a moderately low-income, very diverse community. She's bilingual, so she's, she's very good about that. But she, she lets me come in occasionally to her class or did before the pandemic and when she had a class to, for me to go into, really. And I would teach them cryptography. And it was a blast to teach this math, which a lot of people say, "Oh, you can't do that," as a third grader. And the third graders ate it up because you, they made Caesar ciphers and they made these little wheels that turned and then they could send secret messages to each other. So that was one of, a very rewarding experience for me. So those kinds of sort of extracurricular programs, I think, can turn kids on from thinking that school is boring and math is dull, in particular math, because that tends to get the dull category a lot, and turn them, turn it into something that's hyper, hyper-exciting and that they just want to do.
One of the original things that actually made me fall in love with this district before I had kids old enough to attend was going through a program and learning about our Math to Construct programs. So we actually have, at two of our high schools, we have math programs where the students learn math by constructing a half of a building or half of a house.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, yeah. So they, they get to actually build the house and that's how they learn their math because not everybody learns in the traditional way.
No, they don't. I think that's most of my questions, unless you have any more for me.
No.
Did you write this in tech?
Yes. I can't help it. That's what I do.
The software that she used is unique to engineers and math professors. The rest of us use Word and can't make an equation appear on the paper.
Yeah, and then someone says, "Can you turn that PDF into Word?" And I'm going...
Not really.
Well, you can, but it's, it's like, it's like taking something elegant and great and putting it into something that isn't. And you can go the other way as well. And you can put, and PDF is sort of the low-order thing and it's, it loses a lot of its flavor when you do it.
Rob's language right now.
Sorry.
That's okay.
No, I just wanted to be sure that I was seeing what I was seeing.
You are.
Distinctive that way.
All right.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in to meet with us and we'll be in touch.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. My agenda. We don't have any more. Are they? Okay, we're not done. We're going to go, at this time, we're going to go ahead and go into our executive session. Oh, excuse me. I need to call a recess first. I'm going to go ahead and call recess while the board goes into our executive session to evaluate candidates for Board of Directors, opens position, District Number Four. How long do you think we need? Half an hour, 30 minutes? Okay, we're going to go into our executive session for 30 minutes. Thank you.